Okay. All right. We will call this meeting to order. ZBA, meeting of April 27th, 2021. And Mr. Bush, since you are new to this group, would you like to start the pledge of allegiance for us?
Right off the bat, right?
Yes.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and eternal.
Thank you very much. All right. One thing I did not see on here that I'm going to add is a roll call of attendants. And we have Ms. Thompson.
Here.
And myself, Debbie Hone, and our newest member is Ms. Bush.
Yes.
And also for staff, we've got another newbie, Jeremy Smith, and then we also have Mr. Laddie. All right.
Astute, Mr. Laddie.
Yes. Approval of the minutes from March 16th, which we just got today. Does anybody see any corrections on those? I would offer a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Got Mr. Bush, second by Ron. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Ryan? Did Ryan second it?
I did.
Thank you.
Listen, rather than R.
I'm not used to actually seeing people now because I have a little screen in the computer and I never can ever recognize anybody's voices. I don't believe we have any additional communications.
No.
Okay. No unfinished business, so we will jump right into new business with our case V21-001 for a dimension variance for Discount Tire Company. Purpose of this hearing is to receive comments from the public to consider dimensional variance requests from Section 4.16, section of the zoning ordinance for automobile maintenance service establishment and auto repair, and the proposed principal structure to be located less than 500 feet minimum. And who do we have representing Discount Tire?
Jerry Adlin from Saba Land.
Let's see. So... And what we will do is we'll have you be able to make a little presentation and then we will bring it back to the board for some discussion. I'll open it up to the public for their discussion and then we'll kind of come back to the board and you'll have a chance to respond. So again, who is going to be presenting?
Yeah, so I'm Ryan McEnhill with ENG. And actually Roger Merrill, who's a regional contact for Discount Tire, was set to be here, but he's over at the city of Grand Blanc, so he's on his way over here. But anyway, I think I'm able to handle this by myself. So obviously, yeah, the request today is because we are proposing our principal structure to be located less than 500 feet from the residential district. And obviously, our site does not allow conformance to reach that 500 feet. So I think what we're going to try to convey to you today is that this use is in harmony, I guess, with the commercial node that's already there. And the way that we have designed this and the way that it's going to be operated is not typical to an auto repair shop. So those are the things that we're going to try to convey to this zoning board here today. But I did want to give you just a little bit of background about what Discount Tire does. So they are just a retail tire and wheel store for passenger cars and light trucks. They don't do anything else. They don't do oil changes. They don't do mufflers. They don't do brakes. They're strictly tires and wheels. They operate 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. On Saturday, they're there 8:00 to 5:00. They typically service about 45 to 60 vehicles a day for tires and wheels. And then they also have air checks that they do that generates about 30 to 40 trips on a daily basis. So on a daily basis, you're going to see a trip generation of about 75 to 100 gars, which equates to seven to 10 an hour. So it's not a heavily trafficked site where you're going to see a lot of vehicles in and out of the site. So I did want to focus a little bit on the building design because, as I said, this is not the typical tire store that you're going to see normally. Typically, you would see for an auto service establishment, you know, you look at a Bell Tire that's got 10 service bays. You look at a Tuffy's that got eight service bays all facing. We have been proactive. Early on, we started this process with the planning commission back in early 2020 about this site, and we made drastic changes due to concerns with staff at the time about noise was a big thing. So we completely modified this building design, and there's only three or four of these nationwide because they're very expensive to build. It's called a drive-through facility. So when you look at these renderings, you know, this would be looking at Case Avenue towards Saginaw. The residential would be over here. You can't see a service bay. So there's only one door in, one door out. Everything's done internally inside the building. On this lower rendering, you can kind of see those overhead doors. Again, there's one on this side, one on the other. Very aesthetic building. So we took those comments that we received early on, again, wanted to be very proactive about addressing the noise issue. And as I worked through my presentation, I'm basically going to convey to you that there really isn't a noise issue at all. So the noise study that I think each of you received, and there's actually an updated copy that we submitted to staff earlier this morning, and I'll just go over quickly what those updates were. We really just wanted to drive home in that noise study that it's site-specific. This isn't just a noise study that we pulled from any other site. This is specific to this particular store. The measurements that were taken from a store, I believe in Scottsdale, Arizona, that those numbers came from the bay doors being open and a completely fully operational at full capacity situation. So the numbers that they got as far as acoustics were with all those factors coming into play. And basically, the conclusions that they came through with the study was that the potential noise level that Discount Tire would be generating would be quieter than the average ambient noise level at the site today. And I guess the point to that is that there is significant ambient noise levels that exist there today. I mean, it's on a five-lane heavily trafficked roadway that sees heavy vehicles. We also have three sets, three to five sets of railroad tracks 525 feet away that see three different trains each day. So the ambient noise that's already there is significant. And the study does not take into account that the fact that we are being proactive. I'm going to talk about the landscaping where we've put in masonry walls. We've put in additional vegetation between the residential and the store as well. So we're doing a lot of mitigating things even beyond what the noise study concluded, which is that we're less than the average ambient noise level, and we're also in compliance with both the city and the township's noise level limits as well. And just to touch on the landscaping, as I mentioned, we do have a six-foot-high masonry wall that's going to be completely down the residential side of the property. We're going to accompany that with seven-to-eight-foot-high evergreen trees behind the wall on the residential side so that, you know, those residential properties aren't looking at this wall. They're going to be looking at landscaping. And then we also have a very nice buffer of existing deciduous trees that are already out there. I don't know if any of you have driven by the site, but I mean, that's the property line adjacent to the residential. So you can see that there's already very large deciduous trees that we intend to keep as part of this project. So and then just obviously, we know that there's criteria that have to be met when we're looking to obtain a variance. And in your packets, I did go through every single one of those items, and I did just want to touch on all of those very briefly. The practical difficulty one, obviously, this site is 225 by 240 dimensionally, so there's just no possible way to get that 500-feet separation distance that is required. So as far as the unique situation, what I kind of, you know, when I was thinking about this, I'm like, why are they requiring this kind of distance for this automotive minor automotive repair use? And I was thinking, you know, from a traditional sense, obviously, I mentioned, you know, the Bell Tire or the Tuffy's that have these 10 service bays that are facing out that aren't exactly aesthetic to look at. And I think in the traditional sense, that 500 feet makes sense. But when you look at the things that we've done with how the building is going to operate, with all the noise mitigation that we've proposed, to me, it completely alleviates the potential need to require that 500-feet separation distance. It's almost like, at that point, it's just a retail store because none of the actual work, it's all being conducted inside the building. There's only two bay doors. So we feel like we're mitigating the noise better, any of the principal permitted uses that are already allowed in that district. And I just went through, you know, some of these principal permitted uses that don't have this requirement. You know, you look at retail establishments, and I just threw, you know, you look at a Dollar General and Aldi or Rite Aid, stores that generally speaking, there's a lot of loose trash and garbage generated from these sites that blows into the residential properties. And that was brought up by residents at the planning commission meeting. You know, restaurants such as Applebee's or a BW3, for instance, where, you know, they're open from 11 until 12, in a B-Dubs case, maybe even longer than that, where, you know, you look at that relative to what we're doing, where we're an 8:00 to 5:00 business, whether that's more beneficial for the residential properties to have that kind of use. And then like hotels and motels, for instance, where people are coming and going nonstop at all hours of, you know, of the day. And those are things that are permitted. And then I just listed a couple other special land uses that are allowed that don't specify any required distance from the residential district to the principal permitted use. You know, and some of those banquet halls, dance halls, things like that, that I can't imagine an R3 district would be super excited about that type of use when you look at what we have here as far as what this building's going to look like and how it's going to operate. So I just wanted to point out those things that, those are things that, you know, they're special land uses, but they don't have the same separation distance that's required to the building. Not self-created. Obviously, we feel the design mitigated any potential impacts better than any of the principal permitted uses. And I kind of exhausted myself on the previous one going through that. The substantial justice, I think this is the thing, if you go down that corridor of Saginaw Street, I mean, there's a significant precedent set there because we have all of these automotive uses that would seem to mesh well with what we are proposing. Those automotive uses are within 1,000 feet of our site. They all have a separation distance that is nowhere close to the 500 feet that's required by the ordinance. I guess I would assume that maybe all of those developments came before this board and got granted a variance of some kind. I don't know that. Maybe they preceded the current zoning ordinance. But in today's case, those are all uses that would need to come before this board to be granted a variance by not reaching that 500-feet separation. Most recently, the Bell Tire as well, that I'd talk about here a little bit more later. But we just feel like this site, this use, is kind of in harmony with already what's out there and is in close proximity. And then the minimum variance necessary. There is the potential that we could be back here for the driveway spacing requirement that's listed in the township ordinance. That's something that the planning commission can waive. We figured if we brought that before you today, that you'd probably table it because the planning commission could waive it, and then there would be no variance required by this board. So... But I would like to mention too, that the row commission has already approved that driveway onto Saginaw, and both Bell Tire and Autozone both have, they both have excess driveways onto secondary roadways, and they also have a driveway on Saginaw Street that doesn't meet those spacing requirements either. So and then the last one, are there any laws that contribute to the need? And that's a no on that one. So I guess I'd just like to say in closing, just to wrap all that up, like I said, we feel like the use is in harmony with that commercial node right there. We tried to be as proactive as possible about mitigating impacts and some of the concerns that were brought on early on. We feel like this site, the way it's designed, the way it's going to operate, the aesthetics, the acoustics, in our opinion, are going to be better than some of those principal permitted uses that would never have to come in front of this board for a variance. And I think just, you know, something that Discount Tire takes pride in is being a good neighbor. You know, I've worked with them for 10 years on projects throughout Michigan and Ohio, and that's one of the things that's very important to them is being a good neighbor. So there were comments raised about garbage going into people's yards. That's something that they want to keep, a nice sight. They want to work with the neighbors. That's always been kind of their motto. So appreciate your time. Thank you for the time, and if you have any questions for me at any time tonight, just happy to answer those.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay there if you'd like. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant at this point?
I do have a couple of questions. First off, are the doors, the drive-through bays facing the residential area?
No.
Okay.
There is, I should say, there is one coiling door at the back. That's a much smaller door that they use. It's near the loading zone there, if you were looking at the drawings.
And on the drawing up here, the road that's, the top drawing, is this Case Ave out on this far end?
So this would be Case Ave.
Okay. So the doors then are actually facing the residential?
No. This is that coiling door I was talking about.
But those aren't doors to the left of there? Bay doors?
No.
Okay.
So the bay doors are actually around, you can see the bay door here, just through the glass, and it shows. They're actually on the Saginaw side. One would be facing north, and the other would be facing the commercial property.
Okay.
So they're facing north and south.
Okay. And then, do you already own the lot? Do you already own the property?
We are, no.
Okay.
We are currently in feasibility. Yep.
All right. And then obviously during the summertime, these doors would be open?
They typically are open during the summertime.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Thompson, do you have any questions at this time?
Yeah, I guess a couple of quick ones. So it'll be one-way in and out, the overhead doors?
Correct.
Okay. So you enter on the Leos or Coney Island or whatever?
Yep.
That side, then come out towards Case?
Correct.
Okay. And then all semi-deliveries and things would be off of Case? Can you explain how that semi-truck would get in for a delivery?
Yep. Yeah, let me... Yeah, we actually...
Really tight spot for a truck to come in.
So the design of these stores are heavily driven by making sure that we can get an interstate truck around. So yeah, I can just show you how that's all going to work. So they would enter off the Saginaw Street side and then go around the north side of the building. The loading zone where they would pick up dead tires, drop off new tires, would be in that northeast corner of the site.
Yeah.
And then they would exit off to Case and out.
So they'd loop it.
Yep. And then Case Avenue is in horrible shape, and that would be completely reconstructed as part of the project.
All right. So your proposal having it past your entrance off Case? Or how far are you going to, are you...
All the way up, all the way up to where it turns to gravel.
Okay, so you're taking it all the way to gravel?
Yep.
Okay. Is it, I guess, one thought quick, is the median or divided entrance off of Saginaw, is that a set thing? Or is that from the township? Or is that, is the Autozone, people don't follow that rule at all in our township, the Rite Aids, everything that have these things?
Typically, a road commission.
Right over top of them.
I fought with road commission at my previous location, Davis and Township, with them. This is their new design, and they're low-profile and low-impact in case somebody decides to jump the curb.
Yep.
And we all know that that's a right-in, right-out, and unfortunately, there's, this is road commission, and they...
That's what I figured. I figured it came from somebody.
Yep.
And I was like, you're awful.
Unfortunately, we...
Because no one knows how you...
It's the right-of-way, so the road commission has jurisdiction there.
All right. That's what I figured. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Bush, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I don't have any questions. I think I have a couple of concerns, but I'd like to hear from the public prior to...
I do have one more question, if I may. Is this the smallest building you could construct? Is this the smallest blueprint, or are there smaller buildings that you have in other locations?
Roger, do you want to? This is Roger Merrill.
Roger Merrill, Discount Tire. This is our design that we do now. If you go around and you look at a lot of our older buildings are smaller.
Okay.
But what we did is kind of evolve and make it more efficient. So this is a standard building. We build all over the country.
Okay. Yeah, one thing too is these buildings have mezzanine level in them too. One of the things with the smaller stores is that they generate so much dead tires that, and a lot of the townships obviously want all of those dead tires and new tires inside the enclosed building. And the smaller stores, they ended up having to come in with...
Trailers and...
Trailers and stuff like that. And so, yeah, they've needed a larger store just to make sure that they can keep everything inside the building.
And we're in process now of a lot of our smaller stores where we have, you know, we'll get fines from the city or whatever, having tires outside. We're realigning them, you know, different locations, building basically these stores.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do. You said you were building these all over the country?
Correct.
Yeah, I think in the presentation, I heard there was like three.
The drive, this is the drive-through.
The basic size store.
So size-wise, all over, but there's only three like this.
We'll have to change, you know, exteriors depending on township.
Well, sure, sure.
Okay. Yeah, if you'd like to have a seat, then we'll put up two comments. All right. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this case? All right, come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
George Rizik, R-I-Z-I-K, 9400 South Saginaw Street, Grand Blanc Township, 48439. The applicant here is seeking one variance. My understanding is that's that 500-foot-distance variance from a residential area. I represent Jerry Adlin, whose company, Saba, owns the property. Jerry's operated a medical transport and ambulance company for years and out of that location, and had a lot more traffic than this place will generate. I think the applicant's done a fine job of addressing the six criteria for a variance, and I think he's reasonably satisfied all of them. I just want to highlight a couple of points. First, the property is zoned for this use. When the township was creating its zoning ordinance and its zoning map, it preordains what goes on this site. It basically says, this is GC, and in GC, you can use the principal permitted use just coming in with a basic, minimum, no-frill site plan. And then certain uses like this one, we have to have special land use. All they do is they make you jump through a few more hoops because they say GC is appropriate for this site, and this type of use is appropriate for this site, but we want to make sure you do a little bit extra. And that's why they have the special use attached to this. And with the special use here, you have to have this 500-foot distance. When this site was zoned GC, the township board, which is your legislature, determined that such a use could go here as long as an applicant or the owner was willing to jump through those hoops. And jumping through those hoops is a planning commission decision, subject to this board's determination. So if a variance is granted, that certainly doesn't end the discussion, and the planning commission's going to have all these things to look at as far as screening and all the other criteria for a special land use. And there's two sets of criteria. There's the general special land use criteria that are applicable to any special land use in the township. And then each type of special land use in the township has very specific criteria. For example, automobile service has a special set of special land uses regardless of where you put it on any GC property. So at the PC is where the really hard questions are going to be asked, I think. So this variance somewhat overlaps the planning commission determination, and I heard some of the questions asking about the circulation and things like that. And this is the oddest-looking building I've ever seen in my life. If you look at it from the top, okay, from the street, you don't, it doesn't have bay doors. If you look at it from Saginaw Street, if you look at it from, that's on the west side, and if you look at it from the east side, there's no bay doors. They have the bay doors where, if you look at, I don't know if you have an overhead of this or an aerial. You come in the north side, you go back in and you park at an angle, five cars, and then you back out and come out the south side. So the bay doors don't face anybody except other commercial properties. Two bay doors, and that's it. Now, I think the site plans submit, it goes way beyond what most special land use site plans typically provide because Discount Tire obviously wants to be here, and my client as the owner of property would like to sell that property to them. As far as this variance, the most important factor, I think, is the fourth one, substantial justice. Now, first of all, the 500-foot distance is a sensory rule. That is, the reason for it is twofold, noise and eye, that is, what you hear with your ear and what you see with your eyes. And I think they've satisfied that here. There's no visual pollution and there's no noise pollution. As a matter of fact, when I saw the sound study, I was flabbergasted because the noise they're going to create is less than the noise as it sits vacant right now. So the ambient noise from Saginaw Street is greater than the noise they're going to generate. And any noise they generate doesn't go toward residential, it comes north and then towards the street. But the substantial justice factor was the one that I think is the one that really has to be focused on here. Will granting this request allow the development of the property in such a way so that, similar to other property owners, and doesn't grant these people any special privileges? I can talk and talk and talk all day, but these pictures, I think, are really great, if I can handle them. What has happened is the applicant has sort of generally said, oh, there's other uses in the area that are similar to this that are within 500 feet. I think, I can talk about that all day long, and the applicant talked about it all along. When you look at this picture, I think it drives it home. The Sarah complex, this is the 500-foot rule, the Sarah complex, not including the Honda dealership, which is in the city, and not including the Used Car Mall, which is to the north. But what's outlined in red here is this Sarah complex. All of the buildings include auto service, every one of them, very intensive auto service, including rebuilding engines, bodywork, bump and paint, oil changes, auto service of every kind, including tires. On 12 different manufacturers' vehicles, covering over 100 different models. The buildings in this seven-building complex that's in the large outlined in red has 155,000 square feet of building. And let's remember those numbers because I'm going to contrast them. You know where I'm going with this, okay? How much of that is sales versus service? Sales and showroom is 45,615. Service and garage, including fleet service, is 109,605 square feet. The complex covers 33 and 1/2 acres, shoulder to shoulder with adjacent residential areas, as you can see here. They don't comply with any, none of those places comply with the 500-foot requirement. Contrast it with this use. This use is a total of 9,820 square feet, five service positions. I don't know how many service positions are in those 11 buildings or whatever's there, but I suspect it's more than five. So there's five bays, so to speak. The bays are totally enclosed. If you're standing outside the building, you don't even know bays exist. The actual service area, if you look at it, the overhead, the actual service area where they're working on cars takes about a fourth to a third of that space inside because there's only five... because there's only five bays, and they're hidden by the drive-through in the front, which takes up a lot of sort of unnecessary space or surplus space. And then tires, storage in back, dead stor, dead storage to the, to the north, and showroom to the south. So, the most that can be serviced at one time at full capacity is five cars. They can't work on them outside, they can't work on them through the drive-through. So the entire site covers one point two four acres, and you'll see it down in the bottom corner here. About half of that, six tenths of an acre is in the township, and six tenths of an acre is in the city, and most of the building's gonna be in the township. So we're talking about one point two four acres, six tenths of which is in Grand Blanc Township. Five bays, five service maximum at a time versus a hundred fifty-five thousand square feet, a hundred nine thousand square feet of service area, thirty-three acres, what'd I say, eleven buildings? Eleven buildings. So the buildings in the Sarah complex invariably also have service bay doors that are located to the rear of the buildings. That's, that's the old way of doing things, and that's the way that the, uh, big franchises want it. They want the nice, clean, shiny cars showing up front, and they don't want the service doors, um, to the front. So they're either on the side facing the residential areas, or to the back facing residential areas. So all the noise is gonna come toward residential areas in that hundred fifty-five thousand square feet, or a hundred nine thousand of service area. Discount's plan has no doors, um, for leakage of sound to residential areas. There's no outdoor storage. Look at these, look at the Sarah complex, you see outdoor storage, you see pallets, you see the, um, big storage for parts outside. The plan is unique in that it places the doors in these nooks near the front, but not on the front facade. So the front facade that faces Saginaw Street doesn't look like it has bay doors. The, the rear facade, which faces the residential, doesn't look like it has bay doors. The bay doors are hidden in these nooks that are, there's a one-way pass-through. And the nooks are used only for entry and exit. They're not used to service cars, so when it's a hot day in the summer and somebody opens those doors, you're still not gonna see the bays. So, um, the onsite modeled sound test, like I said, surprised me because it shows that the sound level is far lower than the ordinance limit, and then the current noise limit there. So, um, I just wanted to show you this map because I think that, that tells a lot about this site. All we're saying is, we're adding, what, another tenth to the Sarah complex, so to speak. And if you're counting just service, we're adding about three thousand square feet of service to the hundred nine thousand square feet of service. That's already within this same half mile. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this case? Come on up and say your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Ginger Wright, and I live at six two five four, South Case Avenue. My property abuts, um, their, their proposed property, and, um... No, they, well, we live right in back of them, right in exactly...
That's your garage, that's your garage.
Yes, that's definitely our garage.
Okay.
But I wanted to, just a minute, I'm nervous, sorry. Okay, times five. I don't have a real problem with this building going in here, but I have a real problem with the noise, with the noise level. Sorry. Anyway, um, the, the barrier, the, I would like to see a, um, like on expressways, you know, how they have those nice barriers, it's a soundproof barrier, not like a little brick wall. What, what kind of a wall are you gonna put up there? A little brick?
Six foot high masonry wall?
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe eight foot tall. And, and, and it's, you know, how they, they have, um, it's, um, soundproof. That's what I would like to see there, because I'm out in my yard all day long because I just like my yard. And, and the other thing is the lighting, what kind of lights are you gonna have there? Oh, I'm sorry. What kind of lights are they gonna have there? Because I, um, don't want the lights shining into my yard. Al Sarah's had a, a light, and it was when I would be in my family room, the thing was blaring all the way from their house to my house. And I did ask them, I went there and I asked them if they could turn it down or turn it away, and they did, they were very, very nice. But these are the two concerns that I have, and the, and it's the noise. It's that, you know, like, I don't know. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm her husband, Kenneth Wright, sixty-two fifty-four, Case Avenue. And that's beautiful. I wish they'd paint my house and yard to make it, 'cause that's beautiful. But we all know that's not the way it's gonna look next year. But anyways, the other thing is, we have had nothing but problems with that property anyways. Since, we've lived there fifty years. We're retired, we live very modestly, but we live comfortably. And we like to work in the yard, we keep our yard looking nice, and, uh, my wife's a tree hugger, so she's always putting up trees and bushes around the yard, and we like to see it look nice. And we just cut our vacation short, two weeks to get here for this meeting, so we were in Florida. But, like my wife says, I don't really have a problem with the building. It is the noise, I don't like the Case Street Drive. We have a problem there, people come, if you ever come down Case Avenue when it's busy, the office building on the left, they, they don't stop, they pull right out in front of you as you're coming down the road. That will be the same thing. And we have, and there are times when you can't get out on Case Avenue for, you may have sit there two or three minutes because the traffic is so heavy. And the wall. Yeah, I, I'm not going to object to the building as long as there is a wall, but not a separate block wall, unless it's a fluted wall or something like that with a cap on top so that we're not getting stains down the side of it. And it oughta have, be broken up a little bit, like with a pile, uh, of a, uh...
Colasters.
Huh?
Colasters.
Yes. Something like that, every ten or twenty feet or something, just so it breaks it up. And, and from our side of the yard, at least it has some decent aesthetic look to it. And, uh, and the trees, uh, they, as far as we're concerned, they could be pine trees or spruce or arbovites. I think that should be up next to the wall, and then maybe some other kind of leafy trees in front of that, or short bushes or something to dress it up. I would have no problem if you do that, but I'm not satisfied that they have the noise level. I mean, we're talking nine hours a day, up to sixty or, or more cars a day, and that's a constant noise. It's constant, it's not just the volume, it's constant. That zzz, zzz, zzz. And I don't know where their air compressor is, if it's inside the building, 'cause they must have a pretty big gen, uh, air compressor to operate all that equipment. So those are my concerns, and I will be at the planning commission meeting too. So...
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Alright.
And, oh, I wanna, can I add one more thing? During construction, if they go in there, if you guys know the new plaza they just built two doors north of there on the same side of the street? We had an off, you should've seen the back of our house. It was just brown, and we have white siding, but it was brown from all the dust. They did not do a very good job of dust control or trying to keep the dust from going through the neighborhood. And, and the other problem was that we've had with this, the current owner, is, and it, he's not there, his tenants. We had, uh, trash in our yard constantly, not only in our yards, but the neighbors across the street. And, uh, we've addressed that. If you wanna check with code enforcement, uh, number of the neighbors, we didn't call it code enforcement on the trash. The only thing that I think we called the code enforcement on was, somebody that rented the building had this big, huge boat out there that didn't run, I guess, and they just stored, needed a place to store. It was like a thirty-foot cabin cruiser, right up against our property. The other thing was that this gentleman used to keep his big motor home there, and he probably can't keep it in his residential subdivision where he is, but he used to keep it there, but then all of a sudden, it went. So I assumed the code enforcement got on to him about it.
Thank you very much. Did you, um, I was gonna close public comment, and we can come back, and, okay. Did anybody else have any comments? Alright, then I will close public comment, and we'll go to, um, Mr. Smith.
Yes, just a couple of points. The, if you look at the last page in your packet, it shows that there's zero, uh, we, we have an ordinance that says you can't have any light shed over the property line, so if you look at that, it's all zero with the lot line. As far as the wall's concerned, is, in general commercial, the maximum height without a variance is six feet.
Thank you. Mr. Laddie or, um, Mr. Smith, do you have any other comments, um, based on the report that we received? Gibbs Webster?
Not based on the report.
Okay, any other comments then?
Well, just as a, just as a, as a member of, you know, I've been listening to what's happening, I'm wondering, uh, I, I understand that, uh, the design is something that, that was made in effort to try to minimize the impact on surrounding properties. I understand we've had some discussion about the, the six-foot masonry wall, which is required in the ordinance for, um, uh, under this section that, that we're considering right now. I did hear, um, some, some points by the adjacent property owner saying, what can be done maybe to make that fence, or to make sure that, that fence is more attractive, number one, to, on the resident's side? And also, is there some element of, of, that can be added to it that could help with the sound issue? Because, and, and I think all of our speakers tonight have, have been pretty spot on with the issue being primarily, with the issue's noise, right? So you've heard about the, the efforts inside the building and the, and the orientation of the building. We've heard about the fence, we've heard about the, uh, landscaping, and, and the property owners say, let's, let's, we would like to see a little bit more as far as the fence goes, if it, if it could, or the wall, if it can actually minimize some of the, the noise effects. Which, which by the way, I, I do agree, when, when you look at that, um, at sound studies, it's, it's interesting, to say the least. But anyways, I, I'm just, those comments are just as an observer, not necessarily from a legal standpoint.
Alright, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Smith, that you would have to comment on?
Just to piggyback off Attorney Laddie, a lot of that can be handled. Um, you can make conditions, I believe, at this meeting today that would have to carry over to planning commission, um, if this were to be approved tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else here at the board have any questions or comments? Mr. Bush?
Uh, all the above.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First question for the applicant. Uh, one thing I did read in the packet, uh, it stated that there will be no overnight cars in your lot. So typically, as I drive around Grand Blanc and see tire stores or repair shops, bell tires just packed. Every night, all the cars are there from the day. Uh, I, I can't imagine that your business is gonna turn people away and say no. Uh, just so I, that's a question I have for you.
We typically do not have any cars in our parking lots. If by chance a customer can't pick it up that day, we'll pull them inside, 'cause we're more worried about vandalism and anything.
Okay, so, so there's gonna be basically no more than five cars being repaired in any one day?
Right.
That's gonna be overnight, so there would be no cars. So if that's the case, I, I, I could see that as a stipulation of approval, one.
We could, we could, the way that we're pulling the cars isn't working out.
Sure.
If we pull them in a park, then we can get a lot more than...
Oh, right, yeah, the, the lane, I, I understand you can get five or six cars.
Well, we're more worried about our customers' cars, you know, getting vandalized or that type of...
Thank you, thank you.
Alright.
Um, the other comments, basically for the, the, the neighbors, um, I think something that wasn't discussed, uh, uh, obviously Attorney Laddie said the noise, noise is the biggest concern, and I think it's the biggest concern for everybody. I like the sound wall, the sound study, what are studies worth? I mean, it says, it says what it says, and it says there's gonna be, it says it's gonna be, you know, not a big impact, that's what that says. Um, however, there is a sound wall, um, I'd like to see a little bit more than just a concrete wall, a sound mitigation wall, possibly eight foot tall. I don't know if six will do it. I'd rather see a variance for height there than anything else. Um, one thing that wasn't stated on the wall is, there is significant landscaping going to be added to your side of the wall. So you wouldn't be looking at a wall, you would be looking at landscape. So now, I don't know what landscape, I, I've got a plan that shows trees and, you know, so they're doing something on that side of the wall for you, um, which, which is nice. It's, it's just not a wall, is what I'm saying. Yes, Mr. Rizik, go ahead.
On the wall issue, I believe, um, I looked at a topo, and I believe that these nice people, their elevation near their rear is eight twenty-two, and the elevation of the parking lot for this will be eight thirty, so they're already eight feet below.
So it's already higher, just by grade, is what you're saying, okay. Um, the other comment I want is, the building's beautiful, I think you've done a wonderful job with the building and, and your presentation. Um, but down to brass tacks is the, our job, uh, as, as the B Z A, is to look at the six criteria for variance. And as I see your scorecard, you have four yeses and two noes. Um, I agree with your two noes and your yes. However, my scorecard's five to one, and let me explain myself. I will start with substantial justice, and I will agree with Mr. Rizik. By granting the request to this development, the property would suit with other owners in, in the area, not giving you a special privilege. So Mr. Rizik was absolutely right, I agree with that. The other ones that you say yes, however, I do disagree with, and that's what we're charged with. Practical difficulty. I think there's a practical difficulty personally because of the business going there. There's a huge gamut of possibilities in the G C district, and not every business can go on every site. So I think that's a difficulty that's brought on by the person deciding where they wanna put their property. Uh, is it a unique situation? Not really, the building doesn't fit according to the ordinance as it is today without a variance. So I, I, I don't see where that's a unique situation. So those are the two yeses that I personally don't agree with. Um, so my scorecard would be five to one, five no, five noes and one yes, opposed to four yeses and two noes.
Um, and I guess I, I would interject a couple of things here, is that, just like Mr. Bush said, that, um, we have to follow the six guidelines for a variance, um, in order to grant the variance. Those are the guidelines that we have to use, as we've talked about. Also, as a clarification, I guess, it is zoned general commercial, um, and this use would be allowed under a special use, special land use permit, which is, um, granted by the planning commission, only if you have that five hundred foot difference. That's that back to the residential. Um, by granting this variance, that allows them to pursue the special land use. So this isn't the final step even, if we were to grant this... If we were to grant this variance, they still have another step to go for special land use in order to put this building on this site. So, and as we talked about, there's, there's several other issues that might come up as far as the driveway. I'm not sure, they talked about the Row Commission having some input and having some approval. I don't know if that was done with or without a traffic study. I also have some concerns or looking at the report of separation to the R3 districts. And there's a list of Al Serra's buildings for the most part, and then Autozone. Autozone being at 30 feet. However, I don't look at this as being a same use. It's either the mercantile or a retail, and they are allowed in that without the 500-foot setback. The only variance that they were granted for that property was the driveway separation, which is also something that this property's going to have to look at. So the most recent building to be constructed out there was Bell Tire, and they have a 235-foot setback. And the minimum, based on the Kia building, was 100 feet. So we are looking at still a variance request of 427 feet. So those are my comments. Gentlemen, do you have any other comments?
I really don't. I think you covered pretty much everything that, that I was looking at myself.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, do you have any other comments?
I, no, not really. I guess I struggle because I, I want to be pro-business to our community. And it's just a weird parcel.
It is, it is.
And it's, and it would be great to get rid of the, I drove the site on the way here. This would be a brand-new site, clean, new, fresh, new road.
Mr. Thompson, and another thing I, I do want to reiterate, because I struggle also. The biggest thing I struggle with is the, is the residents that sit directly behind them. And I'm hearing from them, they don't have a problem if we do this right.
Right.
And as you said, it really makes an eyesore, really nice.
And that's what I, I drove down there today, somebody was grilling.
We got to get it right.
Neighbor was grilling in the driveway.
We have to get it right. In my opinion, we have to get it right for them, not, not for us, for them.
But so, Mr. Laddie, then, can we, if we decide to grant the variance, can we, can we ask the planning commission to then review the wall? Because we're not really...
Site plan review committee will do it.
For that, right? That the planning commission would do the site plan review for the wall, the landscaping,
The drive.
Lights. I mean, I think lights would, my wife fills our blinds every night because of the street light across the street. I think the lighting would be awful if it was, if it wasn't done correctly.
Ryan, I think that the lighting, to the lighting issue...
I don't know if that comes...
You can get zero foot candles at the road.
Absolutely.
And that's how they do it at the road. But when the residents look over, they're not looking at the road, they're looking up at the light. They can still see the light.
Oh, absolutely.
So unless there's a shield almost directly down on the backside, they're still going to see light. And I'm sure the... I've, I've seen them willing to work with them so far.
It's going to be ambient, I mean, it's going to glow all night long because they want it to be lit and be secure, and the lights deter everything too. So it's, as I said, it is a tough one. It does look very nice, and I love all the trees and landscaping. But again, I don't know if that falls to us more, more so the planning commission on the site plan review.
I would think, and I don't mean to interrupt, I, I would think that, so it sounds to me like, I mean, again, as you move through your zoning ordinance, you're still, you're, you're basically find yourselves in the same spot you started, right? What is, what is the harm, what is the basis for this 500-foot setback? What mitigation steps have occurred? What, what can we do to lower the impact on the neighbors? And, and so I'd be curious, and, and it's true that, that they have to go back to, to the planning commission. The planning commission hasn't even made a decision on the, on the special land use. And this is one of the contingencies, right? But it doesn't really matter which one comes first. But I would be interested to hear if the applicants have any thoughts about the, the sound quality or, or the efforts that can be made regarding the wall as far as sound goes. I'm not, I'm not excited about the idea of, of trying to violate our own ordinance requirement with a higher fence than we permit. But I'd be curious to hear if the applicants have some thoughts regarding some sound mitigation to benefit the neighbors, and also if they have any thoughts on, on landscaping. That, that in the event you decided to move forward, could those carry, would those carry forward as conditions of your decision to the planning commission? So are there any, any thoughts on how to solve the problem?
Well, yeah, I think, I think I can address all of the questions that were raised by these folks, as well as what you just said. And I talked about the landscaping a little bit. We have the six-foot masonry wall, which, as Mr. Isaac said, is going to sit well above where their property is at. On the residential side of that wall, we're going to have seven to eight-foot-high evergreen trees that are even going to go above and beyond the six-foot height of the masonry wall. And then I kind of showed that, that photograph. I mean, all of these trees that you see there, I mean, these are mature deciduous trees. I mean, those are all planning to stay. We're looking to keep those.
So who owns those?
So those are...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
They're like right at the property line.
That's what I was going, are those, they're shared? Because those are funky, that could be a potential problem if...
Yeah, that's what's there now.
That's what we want to keep.
Do we, who owns those?
We want to keep those and then add on, on the, that would be the discount tire side, add seven to eight-foot-high evergreen trees, and then have the wall.
Looks like that lot line goes right through the middle of those trees.
We're going to have the evergreen trees on your side, the wall.
No.
Oh, your side.
Your side. So you won't even probably see much of any of the wall.
All right. That, that would be fine, but I wouldn't want them so crammed together that, you know, somebody mentioned that we wouldn't see the wall.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, I really, I really want to discourage this kind of conversation.
No, I get it.
Yep, direct everything up to the board. Thank you so much.
There, there was, I think Jeremy mentioned that we do have zero foot candles at the property line of the residential property too, so, so that's addressed. What else did I miss that was discussed?
Chairperson?
Mm-hmm.
Is, or is the applicant willing to shield the lights farther if the residents have an issue with the lighting that she does, could potentially come into? I know it says zero, but we all know that they're going to be probably, what, 10, 12-foot high poles? You're eventually going to see some of the lights, are they...
So we did, we did reduce the height of the ones on the residential side. But we, I think the ordinance says you got to reduce them to 15 feet. I don't think we'd have any problem reducing them further if that's something that would be requested.
Or just adding shielding to their side?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I guess I did just want to add one, one other thing if I could, about a comment that was made during your discussion. And, and Paul, Mr. Bush had mentioned about you just looking at the six criteria. I guess, I'm wondering if the Bell Tire site, if they came in front of this board and got that same variance, if you're looking at the same criteria and that one passed and they're able to build on that site, it would seem, with all that we're doing, it would seem like we, it would, we're just providing much, 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 much more than, than what that particular site. So I just wanted to, to mention that as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion or are we ready for a motion?
Real quick, I mean, if you look at the site plans, all the air guns and equipment are going to be on the sagging on the side of the building, and it goes to storage. I mean, all that noise you got, those, those stores, tire racks, the outside exterior wall, the building, parking lot, I mean, it is, it's not like the doors are facing the neighborhood, you know, or they're, the, the work bays are not on that side of the structure as well. Is, and Mr. Laddie, is there any, I wrote, no, is there any, because it's a weird parcel shared with the city, is that, I mean, do we have a full 30 on this piece because of the way it's divided?
I'm sorry, full...
So, so, explain to me the parcel, is half of it owned by this, it's on the city?
It's, yeah, it's halfway in the city, well, half, approximately half of it's in the city and half of it's in the township. We do, we have authority over it.
Okay.
Okay. Has the city had meetings regarding the site?
I think one of the representatives was just at the city. Is that true, or?
So we submitted to the city in October, at the same time we submitted for the planning commission. Their position has been, they would like to see the township grant approvals on the planning commission level before they wanted to take it on, on their agenda. When we met with them early on, they were supportive. We're not aware of any variances that would be required on their side. So once we get to the planning commission, our hope is to get right on the city.
So the issue, again, our, so our, this is actually, I mean, they've been to the planning commission before, but, but this is the, this is the lynchpin issue for them. If this, if you guys agree to this, then they're, then they can move forward to the planning commission level. And the planning commission could decide yea or nay, right? I mean, they have special land use considerations to consider. And then the last piece of the puzzle could be the city. But it all begins, it begins here.
Just for clarification, Mr. Laddie, if we approved it today, it could still be denied at the planning commission level.
Correct.
And the reason I mention that is, if we approve it, we're the first body to approve it, that would give the township flexibility to discuss matters, I think, with the city, which I think is warranted prior to a planning commission meeting, so we can get the feel of what they're thinking also. I agree with Mr. Thompson that this is, it's only half ours.
Well, but can, can the city deny him? If we, you say we go through all this and we go through the effort, can the city still throw the hammer and say no?
I suppose theoretically they could.
They, they've done that before.
Well, that's... Again, that, that, let's leave that issue to the applicant. Let them...
Right, just do, we're about our side.
This is, I mean, this is the, this is step one. And we're gonna, we got to make a decision, you know, it's a tough decision, right? I mean, everything, it's just such an interesting combination of, of things coming together.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. It's your pleasure, gentlemen.
All right. I think I've changed my mind. I'll make a motion to approve this, so it can go through to the planning commission. I know I said that the criteria, five to one. However, I think when you look at the building, you look at what they've done, they're willing to work with us on sound. Obviously, we have a, a mechanism at the planning commission level, not only at the planning commission, but site plan review, to really, really fine-tune exactly what we would be looking for, for the people that live next door to it. It is far better of a building than what's there now. I look around the township and I look at other tire stores, and as the applicant said, you know, you look at Bell Tire and you look at all the doors. And it, it looks like a repair facility. This one looks like a repair facility because it says discount tire on it. However, it's, it's unique in itself, it doesn't have what most of them do. So I would make a motion to approve.
Mr. Bush, would you like to add on any specific things as far, as far as the landscaping and the shielding, lighting and the noise reduction, to give the planning commission some direction?
Well, being a planning commission member, I think I can give that direction myself when, when it comes time. So I, I think I can handle that myself, and, and I will guarantee that that will be looked at in depth.
Go here a second.
Support.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Bush, supported by Mr. Thompson. I'm going to do a roll call. All those in favor, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Honay, no? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes, three to one. You're able to go to the next step at planning commission. All right. Thank you. All right. Future business, it doesn't look like we have any. Okay. And I would just like to welcome Mr. Bush and Mr. Smith.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or anything else from the board before we adjourn? All right. Have a motion for adjournment?
Support.
All right. Six, or 7:35 PM.